Welcome to Candidates Common, a public service presentation of CTN. All candidates running for City Council of Ann Arbor were invited to come to CTN to share their platforms and ideas. Candidates who participate will be shown in alphabetical order.
Hello, my name is Ron Ginyard. I am the Democratic candidate in Ward 1 for the August 7, 2018 Ann Arbor City Council race. I was born here in Ann Arbor. I grew up in Ann Arbor. I must say, there is no better place to live than our wonderful city. To understand the direction the city is going, you must understand how the city has evolved from its past. This city did not become a great city in the past 30 years. It was a great city 50 years ago. Ann Arbor has always had a can-do attitude. In the past, our civic leaders and community activists did not always agree with each other, but they were always willing to listen and find balance and compromise. This was not always easy, but they got the job done. I left Ann Arbor in the mid-'70s for school and subsequently a career with Morgan Stanley and UBS. I spent 32 years working in Southern California. In 2014, I decided to relocate back to my hometown. Now that I am back, I can see how successful planning has made Ann Arbor one of the best cities in America to live and raise a family. With success comes new issues the city must deal with, and how we deal with these issues will determine what type of city Ann Arbor will be in the future. The day I see a city council that struggles with issues that need to be resolved. There was once a football coach from the Sparks that used to preach a saying that went like this: "The team, the team, the team." It was a formula he used with his team that produced winning results for over 20 years. Ann Arbor City Council is Ann Arbor's team, and the residents expect them to produce a winning city. Personally, I do not feel we are losing, but we're not winning either. We are not winning on our road conditions. I applaud the effort of an eight-year goal to have the roads repaired, but I believe we can do better. I would like to see that goal reduced to four to six years to get these roads in shape. We are not winning on affordability. The negative byproduct of a successful city is affordability. An affordable city is beneficial to our senior population and a diverse community. Are we winning on development? Development is change, and change is going to happen. It's how we change that's important. We must have appropriate zoning laws that protect the character of our neighborhoods and communities. We must understand that underneath our beautiful city is an infrastructure that needs our attention: stormwater, sewers, and drinking water systems. I do not believe we are winning in this area, but we do have one of the best school systems in the nation. It is a system we should be proud of, and we should continue to fund when necessary. We must also pay our teachers the salary they deserve so that our children receive the best education possible. I believe we must function as a team. There will be times where we have our differences, and there will be times when we won't be able to please everyone, but I do believe a city council must work together to produce a winning city. Thank you. My name is Ron Ginyard, a fresh independent voice for Ward 1 City Council. I hope to earn your vote.
Hello, my name is Jeff Hayner, and I'm running for City Council to represent Ward 1. I'm focused on providing what residents need from city government: responsiveness, integrity, and a safe, affordable place to call home. This approach was developed by listening to neighbors, and I'm honored to have earned the endorsement of longtime First Ward Council Rep Sumi Kalasapathy. She knows I'll continue her fight for human rights and equality. I've lived in Ward 1 for over 30 years, since I came to Ann Arbor to earn an industrial design degree from the University of Michigan. While a student, I worked my way through school, was a resident advisor and member of the water polo and cycling teams. I married my lovely wife Lee Abbott 21 years ago. We live with our two children in a modest house on Pontiac Trail. I've seen many changes to the area, not all of them positive. Education, experience, and neighborhood advocacy informs my civic outlook. I've spent 15 years practicing design in creative and tech industries, and 15 years as a small business owner in the trades. I'm a creative thinker with practical experience in project management, budgeting, engineering, and construction. My experience would be invaluable at the council table as funding requests for capital improvement projects came to council for approval. Along with my work experience, I served three two-year terms on the board of the local nonprofit Ann Arbor PTO Thrift Shop, where I oversaw a budget in excess of $1 million. I'm a school volunteer and a first robotics mentor on the community high school team. I've worked on safe routes to school programs. I fight blight by doing volunteer graffiti removal, and I recently graduated from the Ann Arbor Citizens Academy. For years, I've been engaged in our community and spoken at many public hearings in defense of the environment, to advocate for clean water, sustainable land use, pedestrian safety, and protection of our parks and natural spaces. I consistently call for fiscal responsibility, transparency, and fixing the roads. I'm a member of CARD, the dioxin watchdog group that's been monitoring and advising on the Gelman plume for decades. 1-4 dioxin is now present in groundwater and soil samples taken from our city parks. I understand the depth of the problem, have put forth a 1% for water solution, and regret that our city leadership didn't have the courage to join the EPA Superfund request. Development is another great concern. The continued construction of luxury housing and high-rent student apartments does nothing to reduce demand for affordable and workforce housing. Let's return to encouraging the right mix of development that fits our master plan and promotes equitable growth. Let's recognize the role the university plays in increasing demand for housing and work with them. As your council member, I'll offer practical solutions, focus on the basics, and work with others to represent your interests fairly. If you share these values, visit my website at firstforjeff.org. And remember to vote for me, Jeff Hayner, in the August 7 primary. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Griswold, and I'm running for City Council in the Democratic primary election to represent Ann Arbor's 2rd ward. I'm asking for your vote on Tuesday, August 7. I want to begin by saying that Ann Arbor is a fabulous place to call home, and I'm running because I want to preserve and protect what we love about our city, and to focus on improving our roads, crosswalks, and basic services. I earned my Master's of Social Work and MBA from the University of Michigan, and worked for decades in the corporate world, in government, and as a medical information consultant. I am now an active volunteer with leadership positions in the Ann Arbor Thrift Shop and Friends of the Michigan League. My husband Joe Maycheck and I have lived in the passive solar house we built in the early 1980s. We have two adult children and have had six foster children. My neighbors often say, "If you want something done, just ask Kathy." My neighbors and friends asked me to run because of my 20 years of local and state advocacy for pedestrian and bike safety. And Councilmember Jane Lum asked me to run and serve with her. I served on the Ann Arbor School Board from 2001 to 2005. I championed the $250 million bond to build Skyline High School and update all Ann Arbor public school buildings. I have the experience of an elected official who knows taxpayers should be asked for more money only when absolutely necessary and through a process that is completely transparent. In fact, I have worked against questionable tax hikes. In 2012, I worked with a group of neighbors to defeat the Ann Arbor District Library bond proposal. The library board's plan was not transparent, and demolishing the downtown library was wasteful. Likewise, in November 2017, I opposed our countywide mental health millage. I support mental health funding, but I do not support allowing the mayor to divert millions of the mental health dollars to other programs in a non-transparent manner, even though in Ann Arbor opioid deaths, child suicide rates, and domestic violence are growing problems. My vision is an Ann Arbor that is affordable for residents and welcoming to its visitors. Just a few days ago, my opponent voted to raise water rates by 50% for homeowners and significantly lower water rates for the University of Michigan and other large water consumers. I will make sure that our roads are safe for all users without increasing harmful congestion which creates air pollution. Let's take care of what we own: it's good government. If you agree, please vote Kathy Griswold on August 7, and visit my campaign website, kathygriswold.com. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kirk Westphal. I'm honored to be your Ann Arbor City Council member in the magnificent 2nd ward. I'm also excited to be running for reelection, and I'm asking for your vote in the August 7 Democratic primary. Like many of you, my family and I absolutely love Ann Arbor. We love our neighborhood, we love our local parks, our historic downtown, our transit system, our schools, and cultural life. We love being part of a community that embraces diversity and cares deeply about things larger than ourselves. 12 years ago, I decided to start giving back, and have served the city continuously on boards and commissions since then. You first elected me to City Council four years ago. During that time, we've been able to move forward on several key things that you told us were important. Thankfully, our tax base has gotten stronger, so we're finally starting to catch up on long overdue items like road repaving and corridor redesigns. We're upgrading critical pedestrian safety measures, such as crosswalks and lighting, especially near schools. We've updated water mains, replaced thousands of street trees, and much more. I'm proud of my record as a collaborator on council. In addition, because of my background in urban planning and economics, I've taken a leadership role in several areas. On the subject of pedestrian safety, I authored a resolution that's moving the city toward Vision Zero, which is a proven set of techniques to minimize serious injuries on our roadways. In matters of development, I led the charge that now requires higher-quality designs for downtown buildings. I also helped mediate a conversation with the University of Michigan so we can all be better neighbors with each other when it comes to planning facilities. Things are looking up. I hope you're as excited about all this progress as much as I am. But there's still a lot of work to do. For example, while we're all benefiting from a healthier economy, we have to be much more serious about managing the number of commuters driving in and out of Ann Arbor every day, about 80,000 and growing. Also, our housing market is great for people selling their homes, but it's causing serious difficulty for empty nesters who want to downsize, for our children and grandchildren who simply want a chance at a modest apartment here, and for economic segregation overall. These are tough issues that require the best information possible, long-term thinking, and cost-conscious solutions. If you have questions, if you have thoughts you want to share, or if you're having a problem that the city can help you with, please call my cellphone directly at 734-660-9955. You can also find it on the city website. I strive for 100% constituent responsiveness, and I also strive to communicate with truth and integrity. In summary, if reelected, my pledge to you is to keep Ann Arbor's positive momentum going in a way that serves us now and makes us an even better place for future generations. Thank you, and I look forward to earning your support on August 7.
Hello, I'm Julie Grand. For the last four years, it has been an honor to serve as your Ward 3 representative on the Ann Arbor City Council. I first ran for council with a promise to listen to your concerns and work hard to create solutions. I hear clearly that you want us to make smart investments in our infrastructure, especially our roads. Our children need to be safe as they walk and bike to school. I understand that the cost of living in Ann Arbor is pushing too many residents out and making it difficult for us to work, go to school, and retire in our community. I know that you value living in a sustainable community where we protect our natural resources. I share all of these priorities. While we have made progress in these areas, there is more to accomplish. We have increased funding for our roads and have implemented a long-term pavement asset management plan. We now need to turn our attention to our local roads so that we can safely navigate our neighborhoods. To keep our children safe, we have completed all of the identified Tier 1 and Tier 2 pedestrian safety needs around our schools. We will continue to work with these community partners to make Vision Zero a reality. We have secured millions of dollars for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and made transit more accessible. Going forward, we need to take a holistic look at affordability and create diverse housing options. We now have a seat at the table to protect the Huron River from the 1-4 dioxine plume. Looking ahead, we plan to make Ann Arbor a leader in recycling and renewable energy. Each day, my first priority remains serving you, the residents that make our city the place that I have been fortunate to call home. I truly appreciate all of your support and hope that I have again earned your vote on August 7. For more information, please visit my website, votegrand.org.
Hello, my name is Alice Leiberson. I am running for City Council to represent the neighborhoods of the 3rd Ward to City Hall, not City Hall to the neighborhoods. Ann Arbor is a great place to live, so it's pretty easy to ignore what goes on in council and to dismiss the challenges facing the city. But our growth spurt is bringing these problems to the surface. The council majority, of which my opponent is a member, makes decisions that do not respect the character and values of our community. Council talks over and over about their commitments to affordability, fiscal responsibility, and environmental stewardship. They establish ambitious goals, but let's take a brief look at the record. Affordability: We have set ambitious goals to create more affordable housing, and council majority says affordable housing is a priority, but we are hundreds of units behind. There has not been a sincere effort to find funding sources. When council votes to increase taxes, fees, and water rates, are the effects on affordability for low-income residents adequately considered? For example, council went ahead and voted to raise water rates on homeowners and used the money to reduce the rates on owners of luxury apartments. Fiscal Responsibility: The council majority accepts the budget prepared by the city administrator with few or no questions. More and more of our tax dollars are being spent on administrative overhead, consultants, and the unsupported expectation that using outside contractors can provide quality service at a cost savings. Environmental Stewardship: Council has now played a leadership role in the cleanup of the Gelman plume. We have signed on to the Cities for Climate Protection Program, but there has not been an update on this project for over two years, perhaps because there's been minimal progress. You may know me from my shop dog, McCaptman II, which I ran for over 13 years. Before that, I worked in market research and strategic planning. I have a proven track record of customer service and sound decision-making. I can use these skills to represent you and bring a thoughtful, independent voice to City Council. I thank you for listening and ask for your vote on August 7. Please go to my website, aliceleiberson.com, to learn more or to contact me directly. Thanks again.
Hello, my name's Grayden Craple, Democratic Council Member for Ann Arbor's 4th Ward. Today, I'm running for reelection. I'm running because I believe in the importance of public service, improving my community, and helping people. I was born in Ann Arbor, raised here as a young child, and graduated from the University of Michigan. My wife and I returned to Ann Arbor because we knew it was where we wanted to live and raise our daughter. As a veteran, I believe my broad and diverse education and background makes me a uniquely and highly qualified candidate. I bring a different perspective to council that draws on both my personal and professional experience in representing the residents of the 4th Ward. For me, my service in the Marines has been a central factor in guiding both my personal and professional life, as it has shaped my approach to not only my personal leadership style, but also in my role as a public servant. Through my service, I learned early that integrity is the cornerstone of character, that duty, honor, courage, and commitment are paramount for public service, and that respect and teamwork are essential for success. I live and bring these values with me in my daily life and in my role as a public servant. I am pragmatic and reasoned in my approach, always listening to multiple viewpoints and opinions. I have the critical thinking skills needed to examine the complex issues facing our city. I make my decisions based on fact and a genuine desire to improve our community and neighborhoods of the 4th Ward. I believe the conversation we are having today and the decisions being made affect not only our quality of life now, but also the direction of our entire community for the years to come. As your council member, I have worked collaboratively to improve the quality of life for all by supporting the investment in roads, stormwater mitigation, pedestrian and cyclist safety, park improvements and maintenance, and general safety services. My priorities will continue to focus on our neighborhoods, infrastructure, core services, fiscal discipline, and overall affordability. Ann Arbor is an extraordinary community, and I'm proud of our many successes. I believe Ann Arbor is headed in the right direction, but we still have work to do, and I want to continue to serve you and represent you on City Council. I am committed to making City Hall more responsive and to keeping Ann Arbor a vibrant, inviting, and inclusive community for all. Thank you for listening, and if you want to know more about my campaign, please check out my website at www.crapleforcouncil.com. Most importantly, though, please vote on August 7, either in person or by absentee ballot. Your vote is important, and I would be honored to receive your support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Nelson, and I am running for City Council in Ward 4 as a Democrat in the primary election this August 7. I trained as a lawyer and passed the Michigan bar in 2000. My family lived abroad for four years, and we moved back here in 2004. Since living here, I've been active in my own neighborhood and the city, volunteering with community organizations, working in our public schools, and raising two boys. Two years ago, I earned a Master's Degree from U of M with certification to teach. I currently work as a short-term and long-term substitute teacher. My family loves Ann Arbor for the same reasons a lot of people do. We love living in a city full of talent, culture, and beautiful parks. In these times especially, we love living in a community full of passionate people who are committed to progressive values. I entered this race because I saw a debate on City Council where the words "simple" and "obvious" were repeated over and over again. Discussion was intentionally framed as narrowly as possible to ignore history and context. Over the course of weeks, I heard a complex legal issue oversimplified again and again in our public meetings. I am running in this election because I want my member of council actively engaged in thoughtful and serious discussion about issues. City Council is the last stop in decision-making for many policies that originate with unelected commissions, committees, and administrators. Constructive and thorough discussion among City Council members is our primary representation. When that discussion breaks down, we've lost our voice. I've talked to over 1,000 residents of Ward 4, asking for your thoughts about the city. I'm more convinced than ever that our ward needs a stronger voice on council. Our city is not setting sensible priorities for spending. Our leaders are funding special projects while neglecting the infrastructure and basic services residents need. Passing more millages and taxes is one way that our city becomes less affordable for the people who live here. Oversized development, like the George, has an impact on neighborhoods. Our planning process should not create situations where neighborhood residents feel completely shut out, and our city council claims it has no choice but to approve unwanted buildings. An abundant supply of million-dollar condos or short-term rentals do not make the city more affordable. Our city is not doing enough to promote safety for pedestrians and cyclists. Pedestrian crosswalks must be standardized so that people are highly visible, and signals to drivers are consistent and clear. As a cyclist, I can tell you, terrible roads are a hazard to people on bikes, too. There's a lot at stake in this election. I want to be your advocate for potential problems when hundreds of new residents move in on Packard. I want to be the advocate for residents who have rusty water coming out of their taps because city pipes need to be replaced. As member of council for Ward 4, I would be a thoughtful advocate for our most important needs. I invite you to visit my website at a2lnell.com, and I hope to earn your vote on August 7. Thank you.
My name is Ali Ramlawi, and I am running as a Democrat in the August 7 primary to represent the 5th Ward of Ann Arbor. I have lived in Ann Arbor for almost 20 years, but my roots go back to 1985 when I worked at my family's grocery store, Ralph's Market, at 709 Packard, and then later at my family's restaurant, Jerusalem Garden. I took over the business in late 1993 due to a sudden death in the family. The most pressing issue we face in Ann Arbor today is affordability. The word affordability has turned into a catchphrase in our community and on social media, yet we do not share a common understanding of what it means. Income-qualified affordability includes federal and state programs, as well as local programs such as the Ann Arbor Housing Fund, which are geared to individuals making less than $40,000 a year. If we want to achieve our goals in addressing this type of housing, the funds need to be stable and reoccurring. I would propose reforming the DDA to provide this type of funding going forward. What can a $15 an hour employee afford in Ann Arbor today? I consider 30% of gross income to be affordable. Using simple math, that's about $800 a month for rent and utilities. I believe in a $15 minimum wage, and I pay my employees such, yet most cannot afford to live in Ann Arbor any longer. This is a real crisis for many in our community, as well as other communities in Michigan. We need to address affordability in a wider context that goes beyond the supply side of housing. As a council member, we do control some of the costs to live and do business in our city. Ann Arbor residents are nickled and dimed for services our city once provided. These costs have added up and have a direct impact on the true affordability to live in our community. For example, the terrible conditions of our roads and streets cause wear and tear on our vehicles, and repairs are devastating to those with limited incomes and resources. Every year, our water and sewer rates have increased 6% to 7%, and are projected to continue to do so for the foreseeable future. These increases far outpace inflation. Our current council lacks true visionary leadership and fiscal responsibility, and that makes Ann Arbor less affordable. Our community needs to be more accessible for everyone, including the working class and retirees. It is time for council to move past labels and ideologies and advance our goals for the common good. Please support me as we continue to address social and economic justice and political change in Ann Arbor. Vote for Ali, August 7. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chuck Orpahusky. I am one of your City Council Representatives in Ann Arbor's 5th Ward, and I'm here today to ask for your vote in the August 7 primary. Ann Arbor is a fantastic community, and it is absolutely a joy to be able to serve. We have some of the best parks you're going to find anywhere, a healthy economy, amazing neighborhoods, and world-class cultural events. It's really a special place. That said, there are areas we can improve. The first of these areas is on core services, especially with the roads. It's no secret our roads are falling apart, and we need to keep working to make sure that we're doing the preventative maintenance and the rebuilding to put them in good condition. The second area where we need to pay attention is housing affordability. We are seeing more and more families getting priced out of Ann Arbor, and that threatens the economic diversity that's part of what makes our community so special. The third area where we need to keep paying attention and working hard is on environmental protection, from issues like the Gelman plume to green energy. Over the six years I've been on City Council, I've been a leader in working on these issues, and I've made significant improvements. On the roads, if you drive around this summer, you'll see a lot of work getting done. We're spending more on the roads now than we ever have, and we're doing it smarter. Rather than just letting the roads fall apart and then putting them back together, we're doing more preventative maintenance, like it's the equivalent of changing the oil in your car. This preventative maintenance helps make sure that the roads last longer and we're able to keep the pavement in good condition with less money. On housing affordability, I've been able to line up over $12 million of new funding for low-income housing. This is the kind of housing that's going to help keep people in our community and for those who need it, provide the supportive services necessary for them to be successful. When it comes to environmental issues, I helped lead the efforts to push the state of Michigan to strengthen the standards for dioxin in drinking water. And also, now we are in court pushing the polluter to have a more aggressive cleanup, as well as a more comprehensive monitoring process. The environmental protection also requires that we look at clean energy to address the dangers that climate change puts forward, which is why I've lobbied in Lansing to help remove some of the disincentives for people to put solar on their homes. These three areas: roads, affordable housing- These three areas, roads, affordable housing, and environmental protection, are the big pictures, strategic things we need to face as a community, and I've got a strong record on those. I also have a strong record on the day-to-day constituent services, helping people with moving a stop sign, addressing neighborhood issues, and addressing the day-to-day nuts and bolts issues people need as a community. This is why I'm asking for your support on the August seventh primary. You can learn more at www.voteforchuck.org, and please give me your vote on August seventh. Thank you.
This concludes a presentation by candidates running for Ann Arbor City Council. This program is available for viewing online. Visit atugov.org/watchctn. Remember to do your part and vote on August seventh.